Okay. Hello, testing. Testing, one, two, three, testing, there we go. All right, we'll call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, May 23, 2016, to order, and the first item on the agenda is citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens who wish to express concerns about things other than what is listed on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the chairman's update. I want to start by registering a protest against statements made at the Boxborough Town Meeting which disparaged the athletes who used the TJ O'Grady Skate Park on Charter Road. Completed in 2005, the skate park was envisioned as a safe alternative to the streets for skateboarders, following TJ's tragic death while skateboarding. TJ was a young Boxborough resident, and the original construction was supported by many Boxborough parents and friends of TJ. Originally funded by Acton CPC funds, private donations, and grassroots fundraising, the park opened in 2005. Acton's 2016 Town Meeting appropriated $135,000 in CPA funds to expand and improve the park. Boxborough's Town Meeting was asked to appropriate an additional $40,000 to support the expansion. Both the Boxborough Community Preservation Committee and Recreation Commission supported that request, which was then rejected by their Town Meeting. As reported in The Beacon, some Boxborough residents opposed the funding because they alleged there was "unsavory activity" and "drug use" in the park that had led them to call the Acton Police. Neither allegation is supported by the facts. According to Deputy Chief Burrows, and I quoting Chief Burrows, "In 2015, there were no reports or arrests for alcohol or drugs being sold, used, or possessed on the property." Both the Boxborough Selectmen and the FinCom opposed the funding in part because they did not support funding CPA projects outside of Boxborough. While I disagree, because the CPA Act encourages regional projects, and many Boxborough residents use the skate park, at least it's a legitimate concern. Not all kids need or want to play soccer. The skate park allows for safe, fun, healthy recreation for a large number of youth and adults. Acton's Town Meeting over the years has overwhelmingly supported appropriating several hundred thousand dollars to build and improve the park. For Boxborough Town Meeting, certain Boxborough Town Meeting participants to disparage the users of the park, as well as the Acton Public Safety and Recreation employees who oversee it, without sufficient cause, was dishonest and unfair. So, with that blast, moving on to more mundane things, the MAPC Annual Council Meeting, Mass Area Planning Council Annual Council Meeting, is going to be held this Wednesday morning, starting at 9:30 at the Holiday Inn in Boxborough. They have a panel presentation on stormwater permits required by the federal government. There's going to be a shuttle from the Acton Train Station to the Holiday Inn, so if you're interested in attending that council meeting on Wednesday morning, you can get more information over MAPC's website. The South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee is holding a public forum on Wednesday, I'm sorry, Thursday evening, on May 26. I believe it's at the Town Hall, on the proposed increases in the parking rates at the train station, so if you're a commuter, you're interested in commenting on the proposed parking rate increases, that meeting is being held Wednesday night, Thursday night, Thursday, the 26th. Memorial Day Parade is next Monday, starts at the Gate School at 10:00 a.m., goes along to Mount Hope Cemetery. The main ceremony begins there at 11:00 a.m. and then proceeds down Central Street to the West Acton Common for an abbreviated ceremony, so we encourage everyone to turn out for the parade. The Water Supply District has sent a letter to the federal EPA commenting on the cleanup of the Grace Hazardous Waste Site, as well as the Nuclear Metals Hazardous Waste Site, which isn't in Acton, but is just over the line on Route 62 going toward Concord. They're requesting that the EPA consider both sites as one, and complaining that a plume is flowing into Acton's water resources, and is concerned that the federal government is not paying enough attention to it. I understand the Board of Health sent the letter too, I haven't seen that. So that's a concern, and in terms of, let's see, the Minuteman School District, one town failed to approve the funding for the new school, the town of Belmont, rather than call a district-wide election, the school committee for Minuteman has taken a different tact along with their superintendent. They've asked the state building authority, school building authority, to extend the deadline for getting approval to move forward with the project, and extend the deadline for also making sure that 40 percent of the cost is paid by the school building authority until the fall. They're hoping they can turn Belmont around, have another Town Meeting, get them to vote to approve it. If they can't in the fall, then they would start the process again and hold a district-wide election, assuming they get the school building authority to go along with this, to build the $150 million, I guess, new building. Then we'd have a district-wide election in the fall to get approval to move forward. So, that's what's happening with Minuteman. Let me just mention a couple of committees this week. The Acton 2020 Committee is a committee in town that deals with overseeing implementation of the master plan priorities, and there's another committee called the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee that's been working on the Kelly's Corner Improvement Projects. Town Meeting funded the design to get to the point where we can access, hopefully, state money to build new sidewalks, roads, and the other improvements we want to do in Kelly's The Kelly's Corner Committee, I will argue, should stay in place to oversee the design, selection of the designer, and completion of the design materials, and continue working on addressing the issues that were raised at Town Meeting that citizens objected to in the zoning article. So, anyone who is interested in a position in town that deals with planning for the future and overseeing activities in town that will be working on how the town's supposed to look 20 years from now, I would encourage you to get in touch with the Town Manager's Office and file an application to be on either Acton 2020 or the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee. So...
[coughs]
Let me go to Steve Ledoux right now and ask him to give his report, and then we can reopen citizens' concerns, I guess, so.
Thank you. The legislation that allowed for the town to purchase the Harris Street site from Fisheries and Wildlife has passed the House and Senate, and now been signed by the governor, so we'll be closing on that property in the near future. Similarly, the legislation that was filed last fall to increase the number of liquor licenses in town by 16 has passed the House and has now moved on to the Senate, so hopefully that will be passed in the Senate and being signed by the governor in the near future as well. The group I put together to interview consulting firms for electric aggregation has interviewed all three firms in the state that do consulting for electrical aggregation. Just to refresh everybody's memory, the committee I put together consists of Mary Smith from the Green Advisory Committee, Steve Long from Green Acton, Angie Restine, our Municipal Property Superintendent, Matt Selby, our Land Use Director, and myself. So, we've interviewed three firms. We're meeting again on June 8 to see if we can come up with a recommendation to Board of Selectmen as to consult or utilize on the electric aggregation issue. And finally, this Wednesday, we have a telephone call with Standard and Poor's to go through a review of our bond rating in anticipation of our bonding of the Wright Hill and some equipment that was approved at this year's Town Meeting. So, hopefully, we'll be maintaining our AAA bond rating, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Elkin, you wish to respond?
I'm Bob Sekulow from Parkland Lane.
Thank you. Bob Sekulow from Parkland Lane.
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right, no, no. We're always getting confused. Peter, I just wanted to comment on your blast. I too read that, the article in The Beacon, and was very surprised, both by the allegations and by the decision of the Boxborough Town Meeting. And I appreciated your comments this evening, and I'm wondering if there is, it may be, perhaps you've already done this, but I'm wondering if there might not be some way to communicate that to Boxborough, not just to the Board of Selectmen, but to the citizens via their newspaper. Oh!
Okay. I also was considering just sending my comments for publication as a letter in The Beacon. We do have very good relations with Boxborough between our Rec. Commission and Boxborough's Rec. Commission, and also, Boxborough just adopted the CPA last year, this was their first round of funding, and so this Community Preservation Committee did recommend the Town Meeting, you know, appropriate the funding, so I think it was a minority of people who were making these kind of statements. It was a close vote, as I understand it, but I think it went beyond what was necessary in the debate, so I agree, we should send some kind of a message to the town.
When you were listing the events, I just thought I would add another meeting that is happening tomorrow morning. It's the Regional Coordinating Council, which is the regional transportation discussions that go on amongst many towns, from Lexington all the way to Bolton. And tomorrow morning, the meeting is here, 10 to 12, Acton Town Hall, and the focus is thinking about ways to link some of the Council on Aging Van Services, and there will be some Council on Aging Directors from various towns, and we're seeing with coordination and communication whether it's possible to, you know, get somebody from Acton to Concord, and then can you get them to Lincoln, you know, that kind of thing. So, if anybody's interested in that topic, they should come here at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.
Okay, moving on to Selectmen's business, there being no further comments at this point. First item under Selectmen's business is a discussion regarding the meeting with Concord officials. We had a discussion a few, I guess, at our last meeting, Concord was emailing, asking for a meeting to discuss a number of issues at that point, one of them being the new Nagog Pond Treatment Facility, service to residents of Lower 2A who live in Acton with Concord water, serving them with Concord's water that they take out of Nagog Pond, Knox Trail, access to Acton water on Knox Trail, and the site that Concord has secured to park school buses off of Knox Trail. It's Concord land, and they were looking for water to be supplied by the Acton Water District. And was there a fourth issue that was part of that? Maybe the issue of how drawing more water out of Nagog Pond might affect the ability of the pond to sustain itself, I guess. Now, Concord has, well, we did decide we would meet with Concord over those issues, appoint Janet and Katie to be the Selectmen's representatives that would meet with Concord officials. Now Concord has narrowed down the agenda, they don't want to, well, I think with Knox Trail, my understanding is they've just decided to drill wells and supply their own water and not deal with Acton. I think there is an issue with the Acton Water District supplying water to out-of-town property, so they have taken off the table the issue of Nagog Pond and the issue of supplying water to Acton residents on Lower 2A, and they only want to talk about the new water treatment facility. So, I think what we need to do is very clearly define so that all of us understand what is the goal of this meeting with Concord at this point, particularly if Selectmen are involved when there's still an ongoing public hearing open. What are our interests in doing this, and what do we hope to achieve by it, so that we can decide how we want to proceed? But I'd throw that question out first. Katie?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a little torn. I think when we spoke about this two meetings ago, and you expressed concerns about having the, you know, us as the authority that will be, you know, voting on their site plan special permit, having, you know, this separate meeting with just a couple of us, it felt better to me that we were going to be discussing a variety of issues, and when they've now taken that off the table, I've become more uncomfortable with meeting with them just about the site plan. I think there are sometimes benefits in increasing the communication and being able to talk through and express some of the issues that we've heard so that they can better prepare for when they come back at the July 11 meeting. However, I'm really concerned that they will see this as an opportunity to try to bargain or things of that nature, which is not what I think this should be, but I'm honestly not sure that they would stick to those parameters, considering that they changed the, you know, have already changed the parameters of the meeting. So at this point, I'm relatively uncomfortable with withholding the meeting, and think that it might, that we might just be better off saying, you know, we're not going to meet prior to the, to the public hearing.
Janet?
Yeah, I rather welcome the prospect of having a broader-based discussion about water-related issues between the two towns, and I think that we still need to have that discussion, and I think it's shortsighted of them to try to limit this meeting now to just the treatment plant, but if they want to limit it to the treatment plant, I mean, you start thinking about who should be representing this board at that meeting. Frankly, we have an assigned Selectman, and then it gets into the concern I have, is, okay, suppose they start migrating beyond the topic of the treatment plant, you know, then I start to be uncomfortable about that, and I frankly think that if they have something to say about the treatment plant, they should do it in the form, our public meeting, in the hearing context, and not, I'm just not comfortable with an open hearing on a public matter that is of great interest to people in this town, that we have a private meeting about the issues. I think that if they have something to say, they should be able to say it in the public meeting, and we can respond in the public meeting. This is very different from, say, if we were in active litigation and we were trying to reach a settlement agreement and talking confidentially. That's, it's a different situation, and I gather from what the Town Manager says, that they say they do this all the time, but as he said, their Selectmen don't handle site plan special permits, so their perspective may be rather different. Well, I think they do things differently in Concord anyway, but I would rather keep the discussion about an active site plan application open, so.
Ching Sung?
Oh, I am in agreement with what Katie and Janet have said. I don't feel comfortable holding this meeting strictly on an issue which we're already discussing in a public forum in, you know, however many weeks' time that is. If there were other issues involved, there might be some merit to it, but given that the only issue on the table will be covered in a public forum, everything that can be said and should be said should be said at the public forum.
Okay, we seem to have pretty much consensus on that issue. The other alternative is to have just staff meet with staff of the Concord Water District or DPW, whoever's involved, and, you know, if they have changed plans or whatever, they should submit it to us in writing if they want us to know about it ahead of time, or have, tell the staff, and let the staff report back to us, or submit something to the record about what their position is, if they want us to consider it ahead of time.
I mean, that's always, you know, throughout any site plan process, that's always the process that they're supposed to go through. Anybody applicant goes through is working with the planning department, and after the last hearing in January, we encouraged them to do that, so that's still open and very much still an option, and I think their staff should continue to work with the planning department on any proposed changes or thoughts that they, you know, they have.
Yeah, I would just say, to the idea of having staff members meet, I'm fine with that, because then they will come back to, go back to their respective boards, and we can have a public discussion here about it, so.
Yeah, Franny?
Actually, I still am in favor of having a tour of the land that we invite, that we list as a public meeting, that the Selectmen from Concord and the Selectmen from Acton are invited to. I know that there was a tour, I was away, there was a walk there, I guess, of the conservation land, or around the lake, but I would be in favor of doing that. I wasn't going to this meeting, so I didn't have an opinion, I was just going to gather information at our next public meeting after it, but I actually would love to suggest that. Yeah.
Anyone else have a response to Franny's suggestion that we have a joint meeting with the Concord Selectmen and tour the property?
I still, you know, again, it's fine if it is a public meeting, and it's posted as a public meeting, I just don't feel like those meetings are actually very accessible to the public, and you get those groups of people together, and you run into issues of people talking, even if it's a posted meeting, I'm not super comfortable with it. I encourage people to tour it, and I think everybody should set, you know, time up to do that individually, to meet with neighbors or to go see the area. I just don't see the value of doing it as two boards together, because I think it just encourages conversations that shouldn't be happening outside of, while I understand it would be a public meeting outside of a regularly posted-held public meeting in our meeting room.
Actually, I mean, site plans, I know, because I was on Conservation Commission before, there were certain applications that required site plans and involved a quorum of the Conservation Commission, and members were very careful not to have substantial discussions about what they were seeing. If there was typically, there was an engineer or somebody representing the applicant leading the tour, then people would ask questions, but if we understood that we had to hold any substantial discussion and opinion sharing for the public hearing, so, I mean, it can work. I don't know that we necessarily have to go with the Concord Board of Selectmen, I think that if there were an interest in, I mean, I have actually walked the property with the Conservation Commission, but, because they also, they were also dealing with the issue, but, you know, it would be nice to go back now that I've seen where the proposal would sit, to get a better sort of sense of just proximity to the residential area, which I didn't get the first time I saw the land, but we can work that out later, and just wanted to say that it is possible to have a site walk with, you know, a full board, and we'll just publicly notice it, and just make note that that's all we're doing, we're not going to have any discussion at all until our next regular meeting, so.
We've done it, you know, we did it with Morrison, Historical Commission does it all the time, I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just saying with a very sensitive issue, I don't see the value in us doing it with the Concord Board of Selectmen. I think there's value in people doing it, I just don't see the value or the necessity to do it together when there's public perception issues around it. It's a very sensitive issue, I just don't think we need to murky it up that way.
Franny?
I can see that, I mean, and I don't think the disability issues, in terms of being accessible, are that important, because there is a road, but I actually can see the idea of just making sure that they have toured, so I would love to ask actually the neighbors who are here if Concord Selectmen have been coming, because I just want to make sure that this is happening, you know, that all of us and the Concord Selectmen are on board and understand the situation.
Have you seen any Concord Selectmen out there?
That's something that probably staff could have a discussion and find out if Concord Selectmen have toured the facility, you know.
No idea. I can try to find out.
It's not, it's, yeah, I would hove them to be better prepared about an issue that's obviously got people in our town rather worked up, but whether they've actually followed up on that, I mean, obviously, the representatives, right, the state reps and state senator did a tour separately, I think, from everybody else, right? You went on it, so if you went...
We were uninvited from that.
Oh, but did you go separately?
Yeah, I met with the neighbors and seen the area.
Okay, and Franny, so Franny, you didn't go?
No, I had a tour from Tom Tidman.
Okay, okay, so you've actually seen it at least once, so I don't know if Peter and Ching Sung want to see it.
Yeah, I haven't walked the site yet, I'm very familiar with it, but I haven't actually walked it, so, yeah. I'll probably do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing, Ching Sung, do you have any more comments? Okay, what I'm hearing consensus is we will decline the invitation to meet with the Concord Selectmen, and suggest that if they want to meet with staff, staff to staff, that's entirely fine with us.
Actually, could we not just decline the invitation, but clarify that we decline the invitation to meet with only two of our members, but we're happy to meet with them, and we know we're doing that on July 18th, right? Or, oh, no, we're not, they're not coming, so actually...
I'm sorry?
They're not, it's just a hearing on July 18th, there's not any assumption that the entire Board of Selectmen...
No, it's not, I think there was one Selectman here at the first day.
So why, so...
They meet every Monday night, so the odds of them being here will be...
Also, so you didn't want to meet, so I'm posing this to Janet and Katie, you didn't want to meet with just two people because you felt like it was more important, but isn't it important that we maybe meet and talk to the Concord Selectmen, who are the people who make the decisions?
I think the concern was not doing it outside...
I think the concern was not doing it outside of the public hearing process. And so there's another scheduled public hearing on July 11th, 18th, I always say the 11th, I don't know why. And the, I mean, it's a little tricky because the Concord Board of Selectmen isn't themselves the applicant, I don't believe. I mean, it's the town of Concord. And so they're the public official, I mean, they're the ones that are applying to this. And I mean, they can also, they understand our concerns, they can gather our concerns from comments that have been made at our, you know, public meetings that they can watch. So I don't, I'm not sure, I mean, for me, it wasn't about meeting, having the two boards of selectmen meet. I don't, again, see necessarily what the value is in that.
Let me give you my view on this. We are the decision makers. It's not the selectmen of the town of Concord. We are sitting as decision makers under a legal process that requires us to consider legal standards about whether we will issue a special permit or not. We don't represent the citizens any more than we represent the town of Concord. We are supposed to be applying the zoning bylaw standards to the application for a special permit. So, you know, what will happen on July 18th is a formal public hearing under the zoning bylaw to make a determination of whether this application is allowable or not. So, you know, what I would expect to happen is if the staff meet, it'd be just like any other special permit. We, you, the planning department can put together a new memo. If there's new information, a change to application that's going to come before us, analyze it under the zoning bylaw and make a recommendation about whether it, you know, it meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw or not, as well as our council, independent council reviewing it and giving us his opinion also. So that's my understanding of what should happen.
Franny, to address your question, I mean, I think, as Katie said, it's not that, it's just two members of our board involved in discussion. It was, the subject of the discussion was now going to be a matter that's already a subject to a public hearing. And if they have anything to say, they should say it at the public hearing. I mean, we're having a secret meeting about something that's subject to a public hearing and what they have to say ought to be in public. It is very, a real discomfort about having the whole board not involved in a public hearing setting. That was really the issue. It wasn't that we didn't think it was important to talk with them. But I think that if we're going to have to talk with them, if they're interested, they should come to our public hearing and express their opinions, you know, post their own notice. But they won't because they have their own meeting, apparently. So that's not going to happen. And I guess there hasn't been any outreach from them either to express concern about, enough concern about having, touching base with our board, so.
Okay, to conclude the discussion on the meeting with Concord, sounds like it. Anything else? Any citizens want to make comments? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to a discussion on increasing the CPA surcharge. The CPA Study Committee submitted its recommendation and its addendum that had all the information we solicited. The recommendation was to increase the, well, the recommendation more specifically was to request that the, or recommend that the Board of Selectmen put a warrant article in the next town meeting, which we assume will be the fall town meeting, to put on the ballot for the 2017 spring election, the question of whether the CPA surcharge should be raised from 1.5% to 3%. The CPA Study Committee has a little bit more work to do to clean up minutes and make sure that their administrative duties are discharged appropriately. But at that point, the Study Committee as a formal town committee with charge by the selectmen will be disbanded and a Citizens Committee will be formed to educate the public and town, other town boards and solicit support for putting this on the warrant and getting an article passed at the fall town meeting to put it on the 2017 election. It would mean an increase, I believe, and I'm just giving you rough numbers here, of about $125 for the current single-family average tax bill to, that would double, obviously, from 1.5% to 3%, to $250. It would bring in more money from the state, which is hard to predict. It's currently at about 40% match from the state. That has been going down over the years as more towns adopt the CPA, there's less money to distribute. We are not in a good position under, there are three rounds of funding. We get the same as everybody else percentage-wise on the first round. The other two rounds are weighted to smaller, less affluent towns. So we would not get a lot under the second and third round. Boston is now talking about joining the CPA, so if that were to happen, probably the matching would go down considerably. But there is some funding from the state that would still be available. So, and if our surcharge increases, then that obviously, since it's a percentage of what we collect, also increases. So with that outline, I guess what we should consider tonight is whether or not to support putting this on the warrant in the fall and encouraging the voters at town meeting to put it on the election ballot for next spring in order to allow the citizens group that's going to form our support when they go forward and try to gather more support from wider town and educate the citizens. The reason we're doing that is because there are legal issues with a town committee lobbying for a ballot article on the election. It's not allowed under state law. So we need to disband the formal town committee and encourage the citizens group to get together and move this idea forward. So that's kind of the outline of where we are and what we're asking for tonight. And I'm opening up to your input.
Well, so first things, I was told by Lee, one of the voters member, that it can't, that the ballot vote can't be at just a town election, that it has to be at a state, not just like a municipal, it has to be at a statewide. It can be a town, okay.
Well, that was a complication with, we were trying to see if the fall town meeting would be held early enough before the presidential election in the fall.
Right.
So that we could get it on the election ballot for then.
Right.
The town clerk was very reluctant to do that because you needed a 60-day notice to get on the state ballot. And we couldn't fit in a town meeting. It would have been August or something. So, and she didn't want to have a separate ballot just for a town question and a state ballot with Donald Trump on it. And so, because it would, the clerks wouldn't know what to do and it would confuse voters. So that, the alternative fallback position was to just bring the warrant article to town meeting and put it on the election.
But so that's my, because I was, I thought that was fine.
Give them 60 days' notice, they'll put it on the state.
Right. No, but then I was told, but then there, I, anyways, somebody expressed, when I said that, expressed a concern that you can't have it on just a municipal, like if you're just holding a municipal election, it has to be during a statewide election. I didn't, okay. It's just worth double checking. I would, I'm going to put that out there because, oh, the league doesn't usually, they're usually relatively knowledgeable about that. I was surprised. So that's just one thing aside. I would, you know, triple check that we can have it just at our town elections in March. Otherwise, I mean, it's a little odd recommending a warrant article this far in advance when we don't even know when, not necessarily recommending it, but recommend putting it on the, a warrant when we don't even have a date for a town meeting. But I will say that personally, I'm supportive of the proposed increase in the CPA surcharge. So I would recommend putting it on a warrant when we have.
It's my understanding that when the town first adopted the CPA in, I think it was 2002 or '03, that may be a little early, but that the selectmen, that was the process that was followed. The selectmen did recommend it ahead of time, but.
Oh, yeah, no, I know you can. I'm just saying, it's, it feels awkward. But again, I'm personally supportive of it and would recommend it. Some of the committees that I'm liaison to, Recreation and Historical Commission, Recreation was supportive of the increase. And there's been a lot of value to them from the CPA. And I see a lot of value in other areas of town as well. So I would recommend placing this on a fall town meeting warrant.
I would be in favor of it. I mean, I keep hearing support of these, the issues that CPA pays for. I keep seeing a lot of support around town. And so this is committing money and it will increase people's tax bills. But in a way, it's choosing to put more of our money there. And if we want to take it out of the budget elsewhere, we could, you know. So we still have that freedom. But I like the idea of using this program as much as we can and eking as much out of it as we can.
Oh, yes, a little rain on the parade. I have mixed feelings about this. I understand the value of CPA funding. And a lot has been accomplished at 1.5%, the surcharge of 1.5%. I think that there's a lot of support for the projects. And certainly, the funding has, of the open space set aside, has come in very useful because there seems to be almost unanimous support for open space acquisition in this town. I am a little bit concerned about doubling the surcharge. And although you say it's, you know, only increasing the average homeowner's tax hit by 125 or so to $250 a year, I'm a little bit concerned because this is potentially coming at a time when we're looking at capital projects and all sorts of things that are going to cause people in this town to be looking at, again, once again, at how much in taxes they pay and what they're getting for it. So I think that obviously, I don't want to make the decision. I'm glad I don't have to make the decision on whether we should do this or not. I certainly think that the public should have an opportunity to weigh in on it. I am concerned that after round one, a town like ours, and I think this was discussed earlier, because of our population and our affluence, doesn't benefit to the same degree as some smaller, more rural and not as affluent town communities in rounds two and three. And we get out of that, the matching we get out of that would be maybe, what, $48,000 for our investment of basically, if we're assuming the same amount of $875,000. So, I mean, a lot of the increase in the funding is going to be coming out of the taxpayers' pockets as opposed to coming from the state. And so I wish that, I wish that the matching were much higher than it is. I have to admit that in investments, getting a return rate in it, I think it's 30% as opposed to 40%, but that's a pretty high rate. And if you could get that anywhere, you know, you'd be not, maybe not talking about junk bonds, but something that would be higher risk. But I still think that that's a chunk of money, $900,000, that perhaps people, taxpayers might rather pay towards something else. You know, that's a big chunk of money. So I'm of mixed feelings right now. I understand the utility of the funds. I'm not entirely comfortable with proposing to double the surcharge, so.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Janet. I stand corrected. It's currently about 30%, not 40%. And we go to 32. If we doubled the state match, we'd go to 32. Ching Sung?
So I am always supportive of bringing any question to town meeting or to ballot question. I really don't think that that's ever a question. If it's, if you have the option to put something to an issue of concern to a vote in that sort of place, you always do it. Because that way, you get the clearest sense of what people want to do. And, you know, as an elected representative, that's your job. And so, however, I am against the increase in the surcharge. I think that it's great that we have so much support for the CPA projects. And I think that they've done a lot of great things. It's, you know, obviously have a lot of things to do with the money. And I think that should remain the case. So, you know, I do believe that having those funds available is a great thing and that we should continue to decide how to allocate them. You know, we always have the option to put the, to put the increase up to another vote at another time if it doesn't pass this time. You know, and so I think for now, I would, I would keep the funding as is. But, you know, I definitely am not against putting it on the warrant or on, or on the ballot at any point.
Any other discussion? Any, go ahead, Franny.
I didn't understand Ching Sung's, you're in favor of putting it on the ballot sometime, but not right now?
I'm always in favor.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I am always, any time you want to put anything on a ballot or on a warrant, I will not say no.
So you're just, you're just saying personally?
But I'm my position, yes. Personally, I am, I will vote against it.
On your ballot?
On, yes, on the ballot that I get, I will vote against it. But if you want to ask me, do you want to put it on the ballot, the answer is always yes.
And also in your recommendation, maybe from here. But in terms of putting it on the ballot, you'd be.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
All right. So you're, it sounds like you're opposed to the selectmen now recommending this article pass. Okay.
Is that what we're asked to do, recommend the article? I thought we're deciding whether to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, I think the committee is asking that the selectmen support the increase, support now, now, support the increase from 1.5% to 3%.
So we have sort of two votes that we want to do right now?
No, no, the warrant article wouldn't happen until we put the warrant together or whatever. But we would be supporting that now, which is unusual. I mean, we don't usually support warrant articles or recommend warrant articles until the warrant's ready. But this, the request is to take a position on this particular issue now.
So do you want to motion tonight?
Well, I'm going to open up the Florida citizen comment. Yes?
Bob Evans from Brewster Lane. I think the fall town meeting is the wrong town meeting. You're talking about major tax increase, you're doubling it. If you're going to put it to a town meeting vote, you should go to the regular town meeting where they will also be faced probably with voting on a significant increase in their taxes to pay for the Minuteman School, which hopefully will eventually get itself going. I don't remember whether it's on this town, on your warrant for this evening, but you've been talking about a capital planning committee. They're going to want to spend capital funds. The schools already are taking people around to view the things that they would like to spend capital funds on. You're talking about huge tax increases. And I think it's inappropriate to sort of segregate out one and say, well, we're going to take this out of your pocket and then we're going to ask you for more later. You should do all things together. But more importantly, you should not do taxes at fall town meetings. You should reserve that only for the regular town meeting.
Let me just ask you a question, Bob. You understand that the fall town meeting would just be, this is just like an override. It has to have a ballot election after, after town meeting. It's a town meeting just authorized to be put on the ballot. Now, the ballot would be before the spring town meeting, the way things happen around here. So, but I just want to, I want to make sure your comment is the same and you understood that.
Yes, I'm quite aware of that. And we have an annual town meeting for very good purposes. And one of them has to do with taxes. And that's, I think, where it should be decided.
Okay.
I'm Carolyn Kilpatrick from Nine Devon Drive in Athens. I want to say that I do support the increase for the community preservation surcharge.
All right. Can you hear me better now? I do support the increase for the community preservation. I feel it's very worthwhile paying the extra tax because it increases the benefits to the town to make it better looking, to better for all of the people. I'm also involved in the Acton Women's Club. And I'm not sure if. and I'm not sure if all of you are aware of the Acton Women's Club, but the community preservation has given us three grants over the past few years. We've made it completely handicapped accessible. It's an asset to the town because it's in the center of town. And I can't say how appreciative the Acton Women's Club is to have the support, which we never would have been able to do if it wasn't for the community preservation. And we were actually mandated by the handicapped, the Architectural Access Board in Boston. So they mandated, they gave us like three years to do this. And so because of the town and the community preservation, we were able to accomplish that. So I do invite all of you to come and look at it. We've now also landscaped it. So anyway, it's a very worthwhile project for community preservation. And I'm on the study commission for the community preservation. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Walter Foster, 3 Jesse Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. We know that it's a very different request to vote this early on such a substantive part, but we really appreciate, this is how the CPA first came to town, of which when I was serving on the board, and of course, I come before you as a citizen, urging you to vote in favor of this. It's exactly the way that it had happened because of the, both the town meeting and the vote. There's really significant time needed to do any kind of an effort to get out the vote. So we really appreciate, if you can, to both vote in favor of this, and we understand that it's well in advance. On a demographic part, the CPC has been, I think, tremendously successful to every single, every kind of demographic that you can think of in the town. It has been embraced, in particular, for the purchase of the open space. So we really hope that people, because this one, unlike just a town meeting, as, you know, Mr. Evans points out, this one has to come at the ballot as well. So there's real safeguards and hopefully lots of great knowledge to voters, where they will have a very clear choice about what to do. We think it's a great, both leveraging either at the 30, 32% or potentially more in the future. We know there's a number of open space purchases that we're looking to do down the road, and this will really add to the arsenal to do that. And I would put in as well that the town itself and the town budget has been a major beneficiary of CPC funds. We have a ceiling that literally doesn't fall down on your head in this room. We have a roof that is wonderful slate for 100 and other years. On this building alone, let alone all of the other kind of public buildings that preserve the character of the town. And we really hope that you would support this and allow the town citizens to kind of, you know, scrutinize it as this town does for every kind of tax increase. I will say that the last time that the CPC, when it first was adopted, we were literally in the same year as an override, which we have not had in many, many years, was very controversial back at the time. But I think that the voter is both sophisticated and informed enough here in Acton to make informed decisions about that. We really hope that you vote in favor of this tonight. Thank you.
Any other comments from the general public? Okay, seeing none? Does anyone want to make any motions at this point, or...
I'll make a motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen supports the idea of increasing the Acton CPA surcharge to 3%.
I second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries three to two.
Can I make a comment before we move to the next agenda item on this? On just a practical comment responding to what Bob was saying?
Sure, let me just ask you to hold it for one second. Mr. Ledoux appears to, okay, why don't you go first?
So I do think that it would be better if this ended up on the 2018 or 2016 ballots as opposed to a spring '27 town ballot. And so I don't know if that is something that we can do, or, you know, I would like to examine that as an option of maybe doing the warrant article, like Bob said, at the annual town meeting, and then planning to putting it on the November 2018 ballot as an option as well, you know, when we decide to move forward with this process.
Okay, I mean, that would be part of the, assuming we do have a fall town meeting, which we're, we think is what's going to happen, that would be part of that, putting that warrant article, warrant together, so, yeah. Couple things. First, Katie's question about the ballot. I did look it up, that it can be on either the regularly scheduled annual town election or a state election. It can't be a special town election. The second issue is, we've been discussing availability of dates with the high school, and it's getting exceedingly difficult. In essence, we've got a very narrow window if we want to use the auditorium, and that's only in November. It'd be basically the week of the presidential election or the week of Thanksgiving, which leads us to have to look at alternatives such as the Upper Gym. Upper Gym has a lot of availability in October. The third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, the 11th, 12th, and 13th, the 17th, 18th, and 20th. So I know the Board has to think about calling the town meeting, but I am going to see, and discuss with the moderator if any of these dates work for him, and at least reserve some dates, because the longer we wait, the schools get very, very busy. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss a joint meeting with the Acton Memorial Library Trust regarding filling an unexpired term vacancy. And Katie is our liaison to the library, so let me turn to her to explain this issue.
Sure. So it actually is a bit of a domino effect issue. One of the corporate trustees has moved out of town, which opened up a corporate trustee position. They met and voted to make Miriam Lezak a corporate trustee. She's currently a trustee of the Acton Memorial Library. So that opened up her, made, created a vacancy on that trustee board, the Board of Trustees. So under, I guess, the charter, we have to meet, or state law. Okay, interesting. The Board of Trustees and the Board of Selectmen have to jointly vote, meet as one board and, or, you know, one entity, and vote to fill the unexpired term. They've put out, you know, that there is an opening, and I believe it was up to 12 people that have expressed an interest. Two have subsequently dropped out, so there's about 10 people that are applying for the position. I find it particularly interesting, as there was just an election, and Board of Trustees was an opening on there, and one person applied. So, you know, I guess it's a lot easier when you don't actually have to put your name on the ballot. But, that aside, 10 people have expressed an interest. The Director of the Library has gone back and asked them to submit some information, you know, about why they want to run, et cetera. But we need to decide a couple things. So first is the process for choosing this. There's a couple ways we could do it. We could have a joint meeting with the Board of Trustees and interview all 10 or whatever the number ends up being candidates, and then make a decision jointly after that. We can ask the Board of Trustees to, you know, narrow down the selection and maybe only meet with a few jointly, and then have a vote. Or we can ask the Board of Trustees to narrow it down, interview a few people just as their, and make a recommendation to us, and then meet just to vote on, essentially, on their recommendation. I would lean very heavily towards one of the two latter options, and probably towards having the Board of Trustees, you know, vet the candidates and make a recommendation to us. And then would recommend that at one of our, we'll pick a day with them, and that probably, I think it would make sense if we can schedule it with them to just have a joint meeting prior to the start of one of our regularly scheduled meetings, and vote on their recommendation, which would hopefully be a quick thing. I'm also happy as a liaison, if you want me to sit in on those interviews, if the trustees are open to it. But, I mean, it's really their board, they're the ones that are going to have to work with this person. So to me, it makes most sense that they would do the kind of vetting and recommending.
Janet?
Yeah, before Katie said that she was inclined to recommend one of the latter two positions, I was thinking, yes. And I, you know, I like the last one where the Board of Trustees really do a lot of the screening and narrow down the field and do the interviewing and whatnot. Whether you want to sit in on the interviews or not is really up to you and your schedule. But the trustees are the ones who actually know what they need in a candidate. We could get information about what is necessary, but we don't do what they do. So I think that they should be, you know, our role is really just a formality. That's what I see it as. I trust them to do a good job of screening, you know. No political hanky panky and all that other stuff. And so that's all, yeah. And then have them, we could just formally approve it once, you know, talk about it at a meeting later, so...
We do have to meet as a joint board. We do have to do that process at some point, so...
Franny, you have any comments? Shin Sung?
No, I agree with what's been said.
Okay, so Mr. Town Manager, you want to contact the library trustees and see if you can schedule them for a half hour or whatever before one of our meetings starts to have that joint meeting?
Yeah, they're meeting on Thursday. Unfortunately, I can't make their meeting, but they, we'll be talking about that. They're, you know, it's on their agenda to discuss, so...
Technically, under the statute that Katie was referring to, they also need to send us a letter that a vacancy exists. So we kind of just need to close that little bit of a loop, too. Okay, moving on. The next item under Selectmen's Business is a discussion about town hall paint color. And this has also come through Katie. And I guess Shin Sung also as a liaison, Shin Sung's a liaison to the Historic District Commission, Katie's a liaison to the Historic Commission, and they're the folks that have been talking about this. So you want to give us the background?
Sure, so this was on a agenda after town meeting. The Historical Commission had put it on, one of their agendas. David Hahn from the Historic District Commission came to that meeting, and we were discussing the recommendation and discussion that came out of town meeting about what color to paint town hall. David suggested and offered to put together a sort of a public forum with a panel, including, he was going to reach out to the woman that did the, when we had her come in and do the, what you call it, but looking at what the town hall was painted historically. And he knew somebody who's like an expert on historic paint colors of the colonial times. And I think he had one other recommendation. And he's asked Kathy Serbo-Bachman from the HGC to kind of moderate this panel, and the Historical Commission has agreed that they would be a part of it and sort of a sponsor of it. So my recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen, you know, agree to sponsor this public forum, you know, put our name on it, not actually be a part of the panel or anything, but we can let David know that we're supportive of it, and, you know, we can have our name on it for publicity purposes. And that would serve as sort of the main public venue for people to come and just to hear some of the historic discussion of various, you know, what were town hall, what was our town hall originally painted? What were town halls around the area at the time traditionally painted? What's the history, et cetera? He said they could bring some mockups of different, you know, paint samples and what the color schemes would be. You know, again, when you get in, there was a discussion of when you get into white, there's, you know, a couple hundred shades of white. So, well, you know, they can show all of that. And this is the, you know, again, we've had people say that they would like to weigh in on this, so I think it would be a good chance for everybody to weigh in on, for the public to weigh in on what they think. And this group can make a recommendation or at least a report back of that discussion to this board at a future date. There's a slight complication just about, you know, we need to put out the RFP in order to get this painted in this calendar year. But we're hoping to work that out so that people can bid on it, you know, with, whether it's colored paint or white paint. And then we can, you know, go from there. So that's generally just our people's support.
Shin Sung, you have anything to add to that?
I have nothing really to add. I agree with Katie's assessment that, you know, we should hold a public forum or meeting where we can discuss this, you know. And I think it's, I think if there is a practical consideration that the RFP needs to go out, it's pretty reasonable to write the RFP as, you know, like, okay, so the only question remains is whether or not this will be white paint or colored paint, and, you know, write it accordingly.
Janet?
Moves to recommend that the Board of Selectmen sponsor a public forum, I guess it's organized by HGC, about the proposed color for, colors for town hall.
Second.
Okay, let me just say before we take a vote, the RFP, there was a question from the FinCom at town meeting about whether it would be more expensive to do a color other than white. As I understand it, the RFP is going to have an alternative. It'll be how much to paint it white, and for an alternative, how much extra would it cost if we wanted to paint it another color? So we'll know that information. It'd actually be a bid, not an RFP, but we would do an alternate bid, so we'd have two different numbers. Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Franny's a comment?
I'm sorry, Franny, you got comments?
Yeah, does it sort of bias the discussion toward history? Toward the Historic District Commission? Wouldn't it be better in a way to less, more open and less biased to just have it be the Board of Selectmen that's sponsoring it, rather than if the...
Well, a couple things. A, they're going to do all the organizing of this, and I'm not. And B, it's not a decision, they're not the decision-making body. So it's just, again, it's people that are experts in, when we're talking about historic building, they're the ones that are experts in both the color of this historic building and the color of similar historic buildings of similar era, presenting information and then having a public discussion. So again, they're not the ones that will be making the decision about this. HGC doesn't have purview over the paint colors for town hall. So it's not, they're not going to be saying it should be painted this color. They're just...
Right, no, but it is saying that the historical context is more important than psychological or financial or something. There seem to be a lot of things that come into choosing a color, and by, in a way, we are sort of saying, we're going to put history as more important than any other aspect.
Well, if they were making the decision at that forum, perhaps, but again, they're not making the decision at the forum. This is one part of, you know, gathering information and feedback. So I think it's important to have that information available to people and to seek feedback. We will also be discussing it at a future Board of Selectmen meeting in which people will also be able to offer their feedback. And as a board, we can weigh all of those various, you know, financial and I really don't know what the psychological implications of the paint color of town hall are, but, you know, visual, oh, yeah, aesthetic, maybe.
There's other things that go into aesthetics besides, besides historical.
But I don't, so anyways, I think, I don't think that, again, if it was, they were making the decision at this public forum, but they're not. It's just a chance for the public to get more information and to offer some feedback and to be able to see some of the different color options.
Yeah, I, we have had one comment already that white would look the best. I mean, without talking about historic, the person just felt that the white color would be the most appropriate because it looks good and it fits with the center of town. I mean, I guess, I understand where you're coming from, Franny. We are being asked to support this public forum to gather information. But again, it will have to come back to us for a decision. This would be one piece of input we would consider, in my view. And although it won't be a formal public forum, it would be on the agenda, and we certainly would invite citizens to come forward and make comments, you know, from their own perspective as opposed to just historic. So they'd have that opportunity, I would think.
We actually have had at least two comments about, yeah, paint them, paint the town hall the colors they are.
the colors they are, Mr. Evans. Mr. Evans is the reason that FinCom actually had a position on the color of Town Hall, and it, and it made the news at, at town meeting, which was really quite extraordinary.
Okay, actually, that's a good point before, I keep forgetting this, but before we vote on this motion, any citizens want to have input into this discussion? Mr. Evans?
I think it's fine that you're having a, a public forum and actually have a discussion and mockups to see what it looks like, but I think you're about a year late. A good portion of this building is not historical. It was built by town meeting votes. In fact, it took several of them. The fact that you don't have grass growing outside those windows is because town meeting voted against the grass. I think it's just very unfortunate that, that you downplay the importance of town meeting by not having come, having had this discussion a year ago so that you could come to the last town meeting saying, here's our proposal, whether it's green or white or, or fuchsia or whatever it was, and there's not reason for it, and then town meeting has said yes or said no. I realize that the place needs to get painted, you've got your RFPs, so this is probably the best, the best you can do, but at least I commend you for having done that. Finished with the white paint, you didn't ask for comments about the library trustee. The charter says that you meet to decide. It doesn't say that you approve their suggestion. I realize you don't want to talk to 10 people, but I would hope that you would ask the trustees to suggest two or three people, and then you could actually meet the, what the charter envisioned, that jointly you would make a decision and not ratify. If the only thing you needed to ratify, they could send it over on a piece of paper saying, here's our recommendation, please stamp it on the bottom line and, and sign it. Thank you.
All right, let's take the motion on the Town Hall, uh, public forum first. Any further discussion? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Support?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, I'll reach out to David and confirm that we'll be a sponsor.
Let me just, since I did fail to take any public comment on the Memorial Library, and Bob has now raised a point. I think, it's my understanding, first of all, that this is state law we're talking about. It's not the town charter. It doesn't really matter. They both control us, so, but I'm not sure of the exact language, but it's suggesting that we do have a role here, and it's not just, you know, a pro forma kind of role, and that it might be better to ask the trustees to narrow it down to two or three and interview those two or three as part of this joint meeting so that we would have more than one person to vote for as part of that meeting. So, let me just throw that out there and see if anybody has any comments or discussion about that.
I mean, again, it's fine. I think we can do it, but to me, I think the Board of Trustees are the ones that are going to be working with these, this person, and I trust their judgment. I appreciate your comments, Bob. I just don't feel very strongly that we need to have a role in deciding the trustee. And again, I, you know, I'm, I'm happy to arrange my schedule so I can do the interviews as a liaison, you know, if you want there to be a representative of the board, but it's just a longer, more complicated process. We can do it if people really feel that way, just, you know.
This is, of course, a temporary appointment until the election in the spring, although certainly anybody who's in that position is going to have a leg up on the election ballot. Yes, Janet?
Yeah, I, well, I am relying on Bob's read of the, of the law, and, and I do remember that, you know, probably a few years ago, when there was an opening on the school committee, we actually did not just look at one candidate, we looked at a number of candidates, including, I recall, somebody was participating by conference phone, which was interesting, but man, and it, you know, it took some time because we had to consider a number of candidates, and we ultimately voted, and it was school committee and Board of Selectmen jointly voting, which was interesting and a little bit awkward, but because obviously the people who didn't succeed were also there, but, so, I, I mean, I'm inclined, I don't think that it, it will take that much more time for us to say, have three candidates to just ask some questions of so that, you know, so that our, our vote is not just sort of a rubber stamp of something that somebody, another committee has done, so. I'm, I would be comfortable with doing that, and, you know, I don't think, Katie, that you have to sit in on the interviewing process, I think, yeah.
No, I'm not going to sit. But I also don't think they're going to interview 10 people. I believe their plan was to narrow it down based on the responses that they get to, to this, these questions that Marcia has sent out to a couple people, and they're only going to interview those. So, at that point, I think it's either we're part of those interviews jointly, or we let them interview the people and make a recommendation to us.
Well, if they're, yeah, if they're, if they're planning to narrow down the field to a couple of people or the interviewing, maybe at that point, we should just have a joint meeting, yeah.
Then it's going to have to be a separate date that's not a half hour before our meeting, so then we need to talk, go back and talk about, so that we can make a recommendation of dates to them for, at their Thursday meeting. So, we need to look now and pick some dates.
Yeah, I would say we could, I mean, they will have interviewed these people before.
No, that's my point, so they, they would.
So, we're going to need some time.
They would base it on, you know, the, the responses, the written responses, narrow it down based on that, and then, you know, we would jointly do the interviews, but that's probably going to be, I mean, to do the interviews and then to talk it out and come to a vote, you know, between two boards is at least an hour or more.
Yeah.
So, it's going to be a separate night. So, I think we need to come up with a couple of dates to propose to them. And we probably should do that now, so I don't, you know, I mean, all right, you know, time-wise.
I don't think, we're not, we didn't take a vote on this. It's just consensus that we're trying to.
No, right, but we, you know, just practically speaking, their meeting is on Thursday night, so we should recommend, we should make some, propose some dates to them, you know, Steve and I can email Marcia so that at their Thursday meeting, they can talk about the dates, this process, and see which dates work for them to hold this joint, you know, interview meeting. So, I mean, you know, they need time. They meet on the 26th and then not again until, I'm not sure if I have it in here, I think the 28th, no, it's not them. Well, I'd have to check when their next meeting is because I don't have it in my calendar. But I mean, we, we probably are talking late June, or, you know, we're probably talking July at that point because they've got to have a meeting, or, you know, they're going to have to set up a meeting, they're going to have to have time to go through the applications to narrow it down, and then we've got to schedule a joint meeting with the, you know, two or three interviewees and us and them and the Board of Trustees, so.
So, I mean, are we looking at a date in July or August? Is that what we're looking at?
Well, I don't think we want to wait till August, so I'd say may, maybe late June.
I mean, they got to go through all that process anyway. It's just, just that we would be part of the final.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm just saying, we need to give them some dates tonight. We need to come up with some dates tonight to give to them, because otherwise, I don't know when we're deciding this, so.
The Board of Trustees meets every two weeks, every month?
They meet every month.
They meet every month, so if they're meeting, so then, I mean.
They're meeting on the 20th.
So, if they meet on Thursday, are they going to have responses, the responses that they're winnowing by this Thursday, so?
Let me see what Marcia's email said.
Because if they're not expecting responses back.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right?
I'm just wondering, can we do this offline? I, I just, we don't know how long, how long it's going to take them. They must have a sense of.
Okay, then I will talk to them to come, yeah, I just, okay.
I think, I think it wouldn't be hard for us to, to fit in, yeah, people are going on vacation and that sort of thing, but we're not all going on vacation at the same time in the summertime, but, you know, to set aside one day, just have a special meeting that's just about that, because we've done that before.
Yeah, that's what, right, that's what I'm saying. That's what we have to do. We just need to come up with some options of dates to, to say to them, these are times that work for us, what works for you.
But then, the question is how far into the future you want us to go, into July?
Let me, hold on, let me find my.
I'm sure those July we have.
It seems to me the pertinent question is whether or not they expect to have responses back by Thursday.
Right, that's what I'm checking right now.
And if they don't, then they won't make any decisions until their June meeting, which means that we're into July with us talking to them probably, so.
Are you texting with, with?
Oh.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Katie's, are you texting with?
No, I'm just trying, I have an email from, from Marcia.
Oh, okay.
But I can't find it, so, hold on. But it's on my phone. We can do scheduling outside of.
Yeah, I would, that's what I would suggest. Wait, why don't we see what they?
So, why don't I talk to Marcia? We'll send her an email tonight or tomorrow. I'll send her an email tomorrow, it's not going to happen tonight. And just say, you know, tell her what we've decided that we'd like to do for the process. She can let them know, and we'll talk about dates. We can send out a doodle to everybody once we have an idea of what a good timeline would be, and we'll send out date, we'll send out a doodle to find a time that works for everybody. I mean, then we're also going to have to figure it out to make it work for the people at the interview, too, so we might want to wait till they narrow it down. Okay, we'll do it that way. So, I'll just let her know the process.
Okay, everybody agree with that? Okay, and then moving on to the next item is Selectmen to appoint a Selectmen's representative to 348, 364 Main Street Master Plan Special Committee.
As the person that came up with the committee, I'd like to serve as the Selectmen liaison for the committee, so. My recommendation.
I would second that.
Pardon me?
If that was a motion, I would second.
I probably shouldn't move myself.
I will move that we appoint Katie Green as the representative to said committee.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the, citizens want to comment on that appointment? Okay. Selectmen to approve charge for capital improvement planning committee.
Yeah, I, I had thought we had approved this a few months ago, but when we went through the minutes, we had not, so I think for the record, the board needs to approve and maybe think about the Selectmen's rep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Move to approve the charge of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee?
Public comment?
Well, I'm going to second the motion, but.
You asking for public comment? Is there, okay, is there any public comment about the Capital Improvement Planning Committee? All right, so we have, we have a motion to accept it and second it?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Finally, on Selectmen's Business.
Do you want to appoint somebody or no? You just want to approve?
No, we're just to, oh, well. You want to appoint somebody right now, or you can, okay.
Janet?
Well, what do people think about that?
Throw my name into the ring.
Okay.
Modestly.
Yeah, I'm happy to, for you to do it. I'm happy to do it if you don't want to, but if you'd like to, I'm happy to have you do it.
Unless, Peter, you want to do it. I mean, you're the chairman, you, you have first dibs, so.
I'm happy to defer to you on that, or Franny, do you have comments?
No, I don't. I mean, I don't have, I don't care who else does it. I don't need it to be me. I have other committee work that I can envision wanting to work on, and as I said, Katie, I mentioned that I wouldn't have minded working on the 348 to 364 Main Street, but Peter told me that you wanted to and you're totally good with that.
Okay. All right, I will make a motion to appoint Janet as the Selectmen liaison to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Second.
I only have a concern, even though it's not on the agenda that we're going to actually assign somebody, can we still do that?
I think, and we can do it under the umbrella of number eight of liaison assignments as well.
Oh, okay. Um, I second, did someone second it?
Yes. Chin Sung, Chin Sung.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Finally, on the Selectmen's Agenda, memorandum of agreement for a special tax assessment agreement with AES and the Town of Acton. We have a draft here of the MOA for the special tax assessment agreement with the company AES that's taking over the property at Post Office Square.
Mr. Chair, this is actually, we already have a memorandum of agreement on the special tax assessment. What this does is, is define some contribution or a right of first refusal on, on some of the rental space. So, when we were negotiating a special tax assessment with them back in the fall, we had put together a comp, you may recall seeing it, a comprehensive memorandum of agreement that dealt not only with the tax, special tax assessment, but a contribution to transportation and a right of first refusal on their, on their office space on, on the upper level. We were told by Mass Office of Business Development that the agreement should be strictly the tax assessment and that all the other items should be a separate agreement, which is what this is. We've been discussing this with them, and it really comes down to two issues. One is a contribution, an annual contribution for the life of the STA on, on transportation. The amount is $1,000 to be put towards the town's transportation service and crosstown connect. We had actually asked for higher than that, but as they pointed out, IBM is, is giving $5,000, so when you think about proportionate to the size of the corporation, we arrived at 1,000. We also have in this agreement that if, if their ridership increases on our transportation system, we would discuss further contributions. The other piece is a right of first refusal on the office space so that we would have the ability to, to act, bring it to a town meeting before they would lease it to some other folks, and I, my understanding is they have actually submitted a response to RFP for the senior center. We haven't opened the RFPs yet, but that would fall under this clause. So, those were the two issues we had been discussing with them, and it'd be my recommendation for the board to enter into this memorandum of agreement. They have already executed it.
Franny?
I had two concerns about the local transportation support part. One is that it said it would be reevaluated based on how many employees used it. I thought, first of all, that it shouldn't be based on that. I mean, it's sort of a part of participating in the whole, if you build it, they will come type of, the way it works in public transportation, it takes a while for people to get used to something. It has to do with recruitment and, and just changing the employment atmosphere in town, and it seems to actually, it doesn't seem like a good idea to actually evaluate it based on whether their employees, where they are right now, are using it. And if you do do that, then it shouldn't just be the AES employees, but anybody who's using the building, including the leased senior center, I would think. But I actually don't think we should depend, I mean, I can see a conclusion, we might examine it and rediscover it, but I just think, I, I wouldn't want to base it on that measure.
I understand that, but we had discussions. I think if, if we go back there, we will have no agreement and no contribution whatsoever, so.
The way Lexington has done it is what I keep saying, and I really think we should look at, whenever there's a new business or a new office park, I'm not sure exactly what, they just have a general mitigation, transportation mitigation fund that people pay into, just the way they pay into sidewalk funds, and we don't look and see how many people are using the sidewalks who are employees in front of the buildings, and in the same way, I hope that we can develop that kind of mitigation in the future. I know this is an unusual agreement, it's the first one we're doing like this, but I think we should be looking at all new businesses or business areas and thinking about taking mitigation not tied in the future, but I hear you that you don't want to change it now, but I just would like to register that. And I did mention this to Doug Halli, and he didn't have any problem with what you have, but I'm sure you're in. What?
And this by him before we had this agreement?
Yes, yes, I'm sure, so. Yes, yes, I'm sure, so...that's just my opinion.
Yeah. It doesn't require any numbers, it's not...no numbers in there. It says if warranted, they can negotiate an increase, so it certainly would be appropriate to say, well, we don't think it's appropriate to charge you more based on this. We pre-thought that. I mean, that's a possibility, so...
I have a question, Steve. Is the 5,000 square feet on which...which is the second right of first refusal square footage, is that somewhere else, other than where the 20,000 square foot?
No, what it is, if, like, for example, hypothetically, a 20,000 space, for whatever reason, didn't work out for a senior center, we wanted to reserve the right for other space, like, for example, rec and engineering or other space, right?
For the offices, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was a very long set of provisions about right of first refusal, and you have to go back, and I thought, oh, my God, but I did, and then now I've...all I can remember is 20,000 square feet and 5,000 square feet, and I've, you know, I know that they kick in depending on what happens before, whether there's an agreement, whether there's an offer, whether there's, you know, all this sort of thing, but, yeah, I'm comfortable with that, and I'm also comfortable with the provision about transportation, because it is an agreement, they've signed it, they're...this is, you know, it's...there's a limit to how much they're willing to agree to, and I think that it's pretty nice that they've agreed to contribute anything to the transportation system, so...
I acknowledge that, and thank you to them.
Any members of the public want to comment on the agreement with AES? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between AES and the Town of Acton.
Second?
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, the next and final item under Selectmen's Business is Liaison Assignments. We have the list of our assignments to committees for the 2015-16 year, and so, let me just ask, without reading through the whole list, whether anyone has a request to change their assignments for this year. There's a couple in here we have to talk about, I guess, huh? Mike Gowing is on a couple of the transportation committees.
We need to change...I mean, one main one is just Acton Leadership Group should be you and Janet, so just move me to Janet on that one.
I am okay with Mike's current assignments, although it...I think it would be preferable if I were able to switch a...my Acton Housing Authority with someone for some other committee. The time is just not great for me to make it to their meetings on a regular basis, and so it would be preferable for me to switch with someone for that one. I'll switch...I'll exchange another committee.
When are their meetings?
Huh?
When are their meetings?
Wednesdays at four...I'm sorry, Thursdays at 4:00 PM, and I forget if it's the third or first, it's one or the other Thursday, I can't remember which one. It's just the 4:00 PM time is inconvenient.
I could...I'm very interested in housing, and I would be interested in that. Magic meetings tend to be the first Thursday, so it would be good to know.
Okay.
I couldn't do that. And I have failed at my liaison job to the West Acton Citizens Library, which I liked because I'm interested in the library, but I have totally failed to be a good...
When are they...when do they meet?
Unfortunately, they meet on the first Monday of the month.
Oh, so they meet here at our times?
So, but some of our meetings would interfere, but some don't, and don't ask me why I have failed.
Oh, that's fine.
Or why I'm publicly announcing that.
I'll take that from you. So, we'll agree to that trade?
What...are there other people that were interested in the Housing Authority?
They...according to their website, the Acton Housing Authority meets the last Tuesday of the month, except in August and December.
It's Tuesday? Okay.
Oh, Tuesday?
It's Tuesday, okay.
At 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM.
That's Tuesday.
Oh, right, there would...I always have HTC meetings afterwards, so yes, that makes sense that it's Tuesday.
Yeah, that works for me, but I don't know if anybody else was...
So, we're saying you're going to switch?
Yes.
So, you're taking the Citizens Library?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I don't know why I have done that, because I really love the Citizens Library. It's just...it just slipped. Um, Peter?
Yeah?
About Mike Gowing's. I'm involved, I sometimes go to the Regional Transportation Advisory Council, I'm also, at least for now, on a different position on the Lowell Regional Transit Authority Board, but I'm happy, I would recommend we take advantage of Mike's participation and let him continue to represent the town on those boards.
Mike Halli?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had voted that last year, because it's...he's an actual, like, mem...not a liaison, it's...right.
He's...yeah, he's a rep...he's a member.
Right.
He's actually a representative, and he's...
He's like a member of those boards.
And he's very engaged in those two organizations.
And he updates us.
He doesn't have to be...yeah, he doesn't have to be a member of the board.
Okay, and we're confident he's willing to continue...he's going to continue doing that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we...he hasn't...he hasn't said anything.
Yeah, he hasn't indicated otherwise.
Yeah.
Anything else? Any other comments or discussion about the assignments?
No, I would just add...well, no, those are temporary ones, that's okay.
Okay. That's done. Move on to the Consent Agenda. All right, and if you want to hold one of them, I'll just read through them as usual and request that it be held if you want to discuss it separately. First item on the Consent Agenda, committee reappointment, Dina A. Ferrara to the Board of Registars of Voters, is my understanding of that position. Number 10 on the agenda, approve meeting minutes of May 9, 2016. Number 11, approve the executive session minutes of April 25, 2016.
I'm going to hold that.
You want to hold that? Okay, Lisa sent those out.
I know, I didn't get a chance to read them, because they were sent out earlier today.
Multiple one...number 12, multiple one-day alcoholic beverage licenses for fugitive productions at the West Acton Center. Number 13, committee appointment, Ann Chang is a full member of the Economic Development Committee. Number 14, committee appointment, Ryan Batez, Acton Housing Authority Representative to the 348 to 364 Main Street Master Plan Special Committee. Number 15, the committee appointment of Carolyn Kilpatrick as an Associate Member of the Community Preservation Committee...Commission, should be committee, Community Preservation Committee. Number 16, accept a gift for the Recreation Department, Selectmen to accept a gift totaling $500 from Century Bank to support the 2016 Summer Concert Series. Number 17, Selectmen to approve to extend useful life for fire department equipment, I'm going to hold that. Number 18, request to dispose of obsolete items from the Acton Memorial Library, and number 19 is a one-day alcoholic beverage license for Mike Gowing for Narrow Park on June 4, 2016. So...Katie, you asked to hold the minutes of May...oh, no, I'm sorry, the executive session of April 25?
Yeah, I'd like to abstain, because I didn't have a chance...they weren't posted until today, I think, and I didn't have a chance to read them.
I also think formally, I need to abstain from approving the May 9 minutes, because I don't think I was present at that meeting.
You don't have to, actually, but no.
I don't?
No.
Oh, okay.
But so, Peter...
You are...you can vote on a meet...minutes of a meeting that you weren't at if you assume, you know, if you believe they're accurate, so...
Peter, just a question, because if you're...are you okay with...do you want to deal with 17? Do you think there's going to be a separate vote on that?
Uh, I just had a question. Let me see where I got to find my agenda here, and I had a question on the useful life of equipment. The numbers didn't match up, that's all.
Right, we...we will change the form before Franny signs it. It should be 650,000.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 9 through 10 and 12 through 19.
With that one amendment to number 17.
With the change to number 17, yeah.
Okay, second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, we're just taking the executive session minutes off? Can you...
No, just do a separate vote, and that's fine.
You want to read them now?
No, just do...just do a separate vote, and I'll abstain.
Oh, okay.
I just...I didn't read...
So, I can have a motion and number 11, approve the executive session of April 25, 2016?
You want a motion? Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm...so moved.
Second.
I didn't read them either, maybe I should abstain.
If everybody didn't read them, we can do them at another meeting. I just literally didn't read them.
Those minutes you drafted, or if...well, if I drafted them, then I read them, but I don't, you know...
We can wait to the next meeting, if that's...if that's what people want to do, I mean...
It'll be...yeah, the next meeting, I still won't have read them.
All right. We have a motion. Did anybody second it?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of executive session of April 25? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, one abstention. Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Move to adj...a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.